Good afternoon. Call to order, the April 5th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Commission. And Madam Clerk, Ms. Vaughn, would you call a roll, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lodge. Chair Wysscombe is absent. Vice Chair Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Brings us to preliminary matters. Are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
Chair Lodge, there's none.
Okay, thank you. And any announcements or appeals?
Just the announcement that the meetings of April 12th and April 19th of your commission are canceled. The next meeting will be on May 3rd. And also that you will be having a joint Planning Commission meeting with the City Council, a work session, on April 13th from 9:00 to 11:30 in the David Gebhardt Public Meeting Room with the focus on planning division workload.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item 2C, which is a review, consideration, and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. First one is March 1st, 2018. Are there any additions, corrections for those minutes? If not, a motion would be in order to approve. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. So ordered. Then there's the second item is Planning Commission Resolution Number 00518, citywide annual allocation of unused or expired non-residential small edition square footage. Motion would be in order to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, that one is approved. And then the third item, Planning Commission Resolution Number 006-18, recommendation to City Council for general plan amendment and local coastal program amendment. Any discussion?
Staff would please just note I'll be abstaining from both of the March 8th items as I was absent.
Okay.
I'll be abstaining as well. Madam Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Commissioner Jordan is abstaining. And also Mr. Campanella on that one?
I'm sorry, I think we jumped ahead. March 8th, I didn't abstain from item 3. Item 4 I will be abstaining from this March 8th minute. Sorry.
Okay. All right. That one is adopted. Then the March 8th, 2018 minutes. Any additions, corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained.
And abstained.
Okay. Commissioners Campanella and Jordan abstain on that one. Then the last item under these resolutions and so on is Planning Commission Resolution Number 00718-18, 536 Bath Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion made in second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained and abstained.
Okay. All right, so four ayes and two abstentions, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Campanella. That brings us to comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. Due to time constraints, each person is limited to two minutes. Is there anyone here to speak to an issue that is not on the agenda today? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda. And we go on to item 3, an appeal item. Appeal of the decision of the staff hearing officer to not revoke the storefront collective dispensary permit issued to the Canopy, 118 North Milpus Street. There will not be a staff presentation on this item, but the city attorney, Mr. Vincent, would like to make some comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just I want to remind that both the commission and members of the public as to the proper scope of today's hearing and the role of the commission in today's hearing. It's a different role than you normally have in typical land use matters. The appeal is not a de novo hearing. On a regular appeal, your hearings are typically de novo reviews. The Planning Commission is not free to conduct your own investigation of the circumstances regarding the action at the staff hearing officer level. In this case, the permatee has already received its permit. That permit has become a property right of the permatee, and the due process rights afforded to property owners are different than those afforded to applicants who have yet to obtain a permit. The Planning Commission's role today is more akin to the role of a court of appeal after a trial court has rendered a decision. The Planning Commission is limited to considering the material in the administrative record that was created before the staff hearing officer's decision on December 20th, 2017. Attached to this letter are two -- sorry. The Planning Commission's decision must be based on the information contained in that administrative record. Mr. Candy, the attorney for the permatee Canopy Club, and Ryan Howe has submitted a letter to the Planning Commission dated April 4th, 2018. Attached to this letter are two affidavits. These affidavits are beyond the scope of the administrative record as they were not available to the staff hearing officer at that hearing. They will be lodged -- the letter and the affidavits will be lodged as filed with the Planning Commission, but I instruct the Planning Commission not to consider those affidavits in rendering your decision on the appeal. The Planning Commission role in this appeal is limited to the single issue presented to the staff hearing officer and decided by the staff hearing officer. Was there a transfer of control of the permatee or an attempt to transfer control of the Commissioners may find in the administrative record information that suggests other avenues of inquiry about the permatee or the permit. However, it is not the role of the Planning Commission to initiate an investigation or find other grounds on which to act regarding this permit. Actions against an existing permit are initiated at the staff hearing officer. The Planning Commission has a specific and limited role in today's hearing determining whether or not, based on the administrative record presented at the staff hearing officer's hearing, whether there was a transfer of control of the permatee or an attempt to transfer control of the permatee. The staff report specifies the standard of review is the abuse of discretion standard. This standard of review means that the decision of the staff hearing officer will not be reversed unless there is plain error by the decision maker. Under this standard of review, there is no abuse of discretion if there exists a reasonable or fairly debatable justification for the decision. I'll be available for more questions if the commission has any, but I wanted to frame the scope and the nature of today's hearing before we started.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Scott. So now, can I put this in my own words and could you just make sure? So Ms. Riordan and I could sit side by side through something like a staff hearing officer hearing and hear the same information, and I could put greater weight or lesser weight on what I hear or on different items than she does, and at that time, we could come to a different opinion. That's not what this is about. This is about whether, in my view, she heard what she heard from the evidence and she made what a normal -- what my reference would be, a normal person could make as a reasonable decision. And unless I can find that she was unreasonable in that process, then I would uphold her decision. Is that a good explanation?
Commissioner Jordan, you have a good grasp of the abuse of discretion standard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for restating it. We need to make sure that everybody who is planning to speak understands this very, very limited scope. But whether or not Ms. Riordan urged or was beyond the bounds of her discretion in making the decision, she did. And the issue is just whether or -- and tell me if I've got this wrong -- whether or not the filing of the statements of information constituted an attempt or constituted a change of ownership. So I'm asking everyone, please, to focus your comments on that very narrow issue. Okay. Any -- Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to Mr. Vincent, could you confirm for us, Mr. Vincent, that the administrative record encompasses both written and verbal record out of the December 20th, 2017 hearing, the staff hearing officer hearing?
Yes. The administrative record before the staff hearing officer contains all of the written material that was submitted to the hearing officer on or before that date, and any supplemental information that was submitted after that date but before her decision, although I don't believe there was any supplemental information in that timeframe, and all of the verbal testimony during the hearing of December 20th, 2017.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? All right, if not, we will go to the appellant, Mr. Dalbello.
Oh, I'm sorry. You will have 15 minutes.
If the mic is on. Okay. Okay. Vice Chair Lodge, members of the Planning Commission, and city staff. My name is Pete Dalbello, and I'm a Santa Barbara native. I've known the East Side for all 46 years of my life, and I'm also a partner in the ownership of two properties within 300 feet of Ryan Howe's Medical Marijuana Dispensary at 118 North Milpus Street. I am also the founder and president of the International Chiari Association, which is better known as the ICA. We deal with a serious and difficult-to-diagnose neurological disorder called Chiari. I have seen how medical marijuana has helped many people with Chiari. Leading the ICA, which will turn seven years old on Sunday, has also given me the knowledge of nonprofit law. One of the main things discussed in this hearing will be the statement of information, which I personally have filed many times. It is not something to be taken lightly, especially when the state of California is arguably the most strict state in the United States in monitoring nonprofit organizations. In college, I studied law for a year, which has come in handy with all the appeals that I've had to file. I am also a former reporter with 25 sources throughout the city with the knowledge and contacts in Santa Barbara that has frequently produced information about Mr. Howe and his dispensary. While my appeal letter lists 20 reasons for my appeal, I learned some new things this week that have me very concerned. As the president of a medical nonprofit, I am in a position of great trust and held to a higher standard. Mr. Howe is also in a position of great trust. The marijuana industry is more than just pot. It is about science, public policy, public safety, land use issues such as parking, and most importantly, character.
Excuse me, Mr. Dalbello?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vincent, as I understood, nothing new beyond what was presented at the staff hearing officer may be presented at this time. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that is correct. Your decision is only upon the administrative record before the staff hearing officer.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have information regarding an arrest?
It is irrelevant. I'm sorry.
Even though that's about his character and the fact that--
That is irrelevant. What we're here today to hear about is whether or not the filing of those statements of information constituted an attempt or a change of ownership.
Okay.
And the decision of Ms. Riordan.
Okay. Let's look at the statement of information, which needs to be filed every two years. If there is a change in officers, for example, then it needs to be filed as shown by Mr. Allen and Ms. Bach. It is interesting that Mr. Allen's affidavit is from September of 2017. While the affidavit from Mr. Martin and Ms. Winkler are in December, which are not admissible according to Mr. Vincent, there is no affidavit from Ms. Bach, yet the staff hearing officer made a decision without taking into consideration one of the most important players in this situation. Is Ms. Bach in the room right now? Is she? She moved. Where did she move to? Nobody knows. Well, it certainly would be nice if she was here, or an affidavit would have been obtained. Because we do not know what her -- we can't speak for her. We cannot make an accurate decision without knowing the basis for her decision. You know, she did not just pull these names out of thin air. This is not Bozo the Clown or Donald Duck or something. These were names that are well-known in the local marijuana industry. Mr. Martin is a grower. Danielle Winkler also is well-known in the industry locally. These are not just names that she pulled out of thin air. And then on top of that, these are billable hours. So to do the work she did, granted, she's not getting the same billable hours that Mr. Allen was receiving, but those are billable hours. Where is the -- it's a billable action. Where is the statement? Where is the receipt that she was paid for this work? She has to be instructed by somebody to insert those names. I can't see her just doing it for ducks. Interesting that both of those names, Mr. Howe said during this December staff hearing officer hearing, that he would never have as officers, even though they're both clearly qualified in marijuana circles. I have filed several statements of information. It is careless and showing poor leadership on Mr. Howe's part that he has no clue about what is going on in his own organization. This is an important legal document, one of the most important legal documents a nonprofit would file. I know this because I file this every two years. And we have an annual meeting next month. Let's say we get someone -- we have a new secretary, let's just say. Then I have to file another one. It's a change of officers. So then the state knows who is responsible in case there is illegal action. It just blows my mind that Mr. Howe -- people look the other way on important matters regarding this issue and other issues relating to his dispensary. It is incredible. You know, we have to realize, we're in a position of trust. He's in a position of trust. The Planning Commission is in a position of trust. And since we don't have input from Ms. Bach, it is impossible to know why those names were filed, but I'm pretty sure she just didn't do it by herself. And Mr. Allen, who's no longer eligible to practice law, that certainly would be nice to know what his thought is. It's interesting that was back in September. The staff hearing officer decision was in December. It is incredible. Ms. Bach is an adult. She can speak for herself. I don't know why a decision was made without somebody talking to her. We have a city attorney's office. I'm sure we could find her. That is -- it's just incredible. It's absolutely incredible. It leads me to -- how can I help but not wonder if something else is hidden? Just like there's something I can't mention in the scope of this hearing that would really blow your mind. I guess I'll have to -- maybe I need to file something else to make sure everything is known. Because the scope should not be limited. I know I can't say much more than what I'm saying, but character is the most important thing you can have. When you read what I submitted, you know there is nobody in the city, no department, that would hire Mr. Howe at any level in any department.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am. I will keep it to the scope.
Not relevant.
Yes. So just like Mr. Allen, it would be interesting to know an update from what his status is with the company, the nonprofit. We know it was more involved than what he led us to believe, but we have to look at the importance. This is management. Management would not have changed names if there was not a reason. And that's what's unfortunate. We do not know why those decisions were made, but they must have been made for an important reason. And when you look at nonprofit law, for example, my nonprofit, we have to have by law three officers, three different people at minimum. I'm sure it's the same thing, it's the same state. So that's one of the reasons that we have to have these different names. Believe me, Mr. Allen, who I disagree with on many things, is correct in filing, having these statements of information filed. It is just incredible that it is not taken seriously by the Canopy, because that is a violation of trust. And as I mentioned, it would be nice to know why those were filed and with those names, but unfortunately, we won't know unless we bring Ms. Bach here. So I would suggest that we even table this discussion so we can bring her here or have her sign an affidavit. Have the city attorney's office find her and get at least an affidavit. Or come back in eight weeks and we bring her here and put her under oath, because her testimony is not being heard.
Excuse me again. As the city attorney said, we cannot consider anything beyond the administrative record of the hearing.
So we'll never know if she's -- what her opinion is?
What we need to know is to have you show us why whatever action was taken, for whatever reason, and the filing of those two statements of information constitutes a transfer of
And that is why the city should be informed every time those were filed, especially when that is part of the ordinance. Every time. See, where my organization -- this is not a dispensary, so I don't have to tell the city when there's a change of officers. But it is in the ordinance of the city of Santa Barbara that the city has to be informed. So that is where there's a problem right there. The city should have been informed. So it's easy for Mr. Howe to say, "Oh, well, I never would have hired that person," or "this would have never happened." Where was he to know to sign off on these things? Especially when they were done -- these are billable, a billable action with billable hours. She did not do this for free. And I request that I reserve my last 3 minutes and 45 seconds for a close.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dalbello. Now, may we hear from Mr. Howe or his representative?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Mr. Howe's representative, also represent Canopy Club. Here today to address the issues before you, rather, the one single issue before you. I appreciate Mr. Vincent's explanation of the standard of review. I won't go over that. The sole issue before you today is whether or not Mr. Howe violated the requirements of the municipal code by changing or attempting to change the management control of Canopy without obtaining prior authorization from the city. The evidence offered to the staff hearing officer in support of revocation were two corporate statements of information filed with the Secretary of State. Statements of information are routine filings with the state. They are intended to place the world on notice of the identity of corporate officers. They are informational documents only. They have no legal effect on the corporation. They are not the mechanism by which corporate officers are either appointed or changed. They're simply informational. The first filing at issue was made in May of 2016, and it identified Thomas Martin as corporate Secretary of Canopy. The second filing in July of 2016 identified Danielle Winkler as corporate secretary. The filings were made less than three months apart. Nobody can explain why the filings were made, not even Mr. Howe. We can assume that Joe Allen, the attorney, who was attorney, who was the corporate counsel for Canopy, instructed Mary Bach. Mary Bach was his assistant. Mary Bach was the person that actually filed a statement of information. We can assume that Joe Allen instructed Mary Bach to make the filings. However, Joe Allen, in his affidavit, we have heard from Joe Allen, he signed a sworn affidavit. He has no memory of making any such instruction. He has no memory of receiving any instructions to make the filings from his principal, Ryan Howe or Canopy Club. So unfortunately, the record is left entirely unclear as to what was going on with Joe Allen at the time. I mean, we do know, and I hesitate to say it, but you know, Joe Allen has had some problems. And I can only assume that during this period of time, there was confusion in his office. And somehow, these filings were made without the knowledge or the consent or the authorization of Ryan Howe. What we do have before us and what the staff hearing officer had before her when she made the decision was testimony from Mr. Howe, both oral and written, said that he never instructed Allen to make the filings. And again, he never knew about the filings, found out about the filings after the fact almost a year and a few months after the fact. And once he found out about the filings, he immediately took corrective action by filing a new updated statement of information with the Secretary of State. We also have testimony from Mr. Allen saying that he never appointed either of these individuals, Thomas Martin or Danielle Winkler, to serve as Secretary of Canopy. So that's the record that we have. That's the record that the staff hearing officer had before her. Although we would like to find out more about what went on, you know, it's not a possibility. So we're dealing with those facts as established. The staff hearing officer decided two points. The first was that the act of filing the statements of information without more did not constitute an attempt to transfer ownership or control of the dispensary permit. The second conclusion that was drawn was that the filings exceeded the scope of the authority given to Allen to act on behalf of Canopy, and therefore did not constitute an attempt to transfer control of the permit. Based on the evidence before her and what I've summarized, the hearing officer correctly determined that without more, the statements of information do not prove that there is an attempt to transfer management or control of Canopy. Substantial evidence supports that determination. The decision was clearly within the permissible range of options set forth by the applicable law. An abuse of discretion did not occur. The same applies for the second conclusion the hearing officer reached, namely that the statements of information exceeded Allen's authority to act on behalf of Canopy. Allen's role as corporate counsel was to advise Howe, and through Howe advised Canopy regarding Canopy's operations. regarding Canopy's operations. Howe testified Allen did not have authority to appoint officers of the corporation. Howe testified Allen did not have authority to prepare or file statements of information without specific instructions from him to do so. When an agent exceeds his or her authority, the principal is not bound by the acts that were taken outside the scope of that authority. That's Civil Code Section 2333. Joe Allen again testified that he didn't recall any directive from Howe to make the filings, nor did he recall any discussions with Howe about naming either individual identified in the statements of information. Substantial evidence supports the hearing officer's determination that these filings exceeded the authority given to Allen to act on behalf of Canopy. And for that reason, they do not constitute an attempt to transfer control of the permit. The decision was clearly within the permissible range of legal options available to the hearing officer, and an abusive discretion did not occur. In summary, the only evidence proffered in support of revocation were the statements of information. These statements by themselves have no legal effect. They do not prove that, that either of the individuals identified were appointed as secretary of the corporation, or that a change in management of the corporation occurred. Any inference to be drawn from the filings was effectively rebutted by direct testimony from Mr. Howe demonstrating that no affirmative act was taken in furtherance of a management change. Allen's acts of having the filings made were acts performed outside the scope of his authority. For these reasons, the staff hearing officer's decision to not revoke the collective dispensary permit was reasonable, and for that reason, it must be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Candy. All right, now we will go to the request.
Vice Chair Lodge, do I use my three minutes right now? Three minutes, 45 seconds?
Would you please come to the microphone?
Yes. Because I have three minutes and 45 seconds remaining.
Do you want, you want to use it now, or do you want to wait until after?
Okay, I could wait for after the, the public comment. Okay.
Your, your choice.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the first speaker will be Aaron Schulman, and he will be followed by Leo Fetterman. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aaron Schulman. I'm a Santa Barbara resident for most of my life. I'm a homeowner, and I met Ryan Howe over a year ago when I began working for him as his realtor. Let me tell you, it has not been easy to find property in this town to work with anyone in the cannabis industry, and we achieved our goals. In light of what Pete Dalbello has submitted to the council, I read what he said, and in the year that I've spent with Ryan Howe, I can tell you that all of his statements are categorically false. I have never met and-
Mr. Dalbello's-
Statements regarding the, Mr. Howe are false. I've asked Ryan many questions about all of these proceedings, and he has been very detailed in his explanations and made himself very clear. I also know the person in question, Danielle Winkler, who introduced me to Ryan Howe. And I can tell you that Ryan, who has, who has built, you know, multimillion dollar companies, he's produced several films, he would have never hired Danielle to be a secretary of this type of organization. And Pete, you're wrong. She does not have experience in this industry.
Please, please address your comments.
Sorry. So Danielle Winkler does not have experience in this industry, and he would have never done that. And I've been going to the staff hearing officer meetings, and I would like the decision of the staff hearing officer to be upheld. Thank you.
Leo Fetterman will be followed by Stephen Branson.
Thank you. My name is Leo Fetterman. I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. Been a resident of Santa Barbara since 1964. I've known Joan Allen for, since the year probably 2000. I, he was my law school professor. And I do know Ryan Howe through Joe Allen. One, I can, first of all, I'm also one of those people who basically does have a doctor's prescription for medical marijuana. And unfortunately, people like myself, we have to go to places like Craigslist and give people our driver's license and information because we don't have a place that's reputable to go. This is the first time, we're not, since years, we're going to have a dispensary where people can actually go, show their driver's license without having to worry about somebody taking that information away from them, okay, and misusing it. This dispensary has been dragging on for forever. As far as the issue-
Excuse me, could you direct your comments to what's before us?
Yes.
Whether or not the statement of information constitutes a change of ownership?
Yes. The statement of information, the only officers that got changed was one, and that was a secretary. And secretaries don't really get involved with the issue of management. Neither Danielle Winkler or Mr. Martin was going to be operating the dispensary, okay? And while you have a nice little technicality, the truth is, the ordinance deals with the management of the dispensary. A secretary basically of a corporation is exactly that. It's a secretary. She keeps records of what's happening. She keeps the notes, she keeps the minutes. She does not get involved in the active management. I believe that since I know Joe Allen, I know of his condition, yes, his memory does lapse at times, he is forgetful. I also know Mary Brock, who do my work with Joe Allen. She, cases I've had to deal with, she does take some, she did take some liberties sometimes.
Please wrap it up, your, your time is up.
Oh, sorry about that. I, I would like the, basically, you know, commission here to basically let the dispensary go forward and stop this running around so people like myself have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Branson will be followed by Sebastian Aldana.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Bernstein. I'm the managing partner of Mary Milpus LLC. We're the property owner for 118 North Milpus. And I'm in support of you upholding the-
Appeal?
Appeal. And I'd like to say that I've known Ryan for three years now, since he started this. He has done everything exactly correctly as far as a tenant goes. He's paid his bills. His word is good. I found his character to be excellent, and I hope you support that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I miss data. You want, want the appeal denied and the staff hearing officer upheld? Okay, thank you. Mr. Aldana is next, and Mary Robles still here? Okay, you're the one that gave time, your time.
Yeah, and now I probably won't need him because
All right, Mr. Aldana-
I'm very limited on what I could say.
You'll have four minutes.
Okay, my, my name is Sebastian Aldana Jr., native Santa Barbara and an Eastside resident for the past 15 years. After reading Mr. Dalbello's appeal letter, I, I do agree 100% and hope you will support it. Being that I am limited, I will have to bypass some, some notes. But I'll get to, I had my first conversation with Ryan Howe in November of 2015. Of my three or four conversations I had with him, I never got any straight answers from him. The staff hearing officer never got straight answers from him. Mrs. Riordan was confused by his answers. He admitted himself, if he saw the tapes, that he was confused himself as he was answering. Bottom line, Mr. Ryan Howe and company have been BSing the neighborhood, all city staff, mayor, city council, and everybody else along the way. Please support this appeal. The Eastside does not need any more negative impacts in its neighborhood. If I could add, if you have not seen the tapes of the staff hearing meetings, I don't feel that you'll be able to make a sound decision. So if you, I feel that those tapes, you need to see them, to see what really happened and all the confusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldana. Okay, that concludes the quest to speak from the public. And Mr. Dalbello, we wanted to use up your three minutes and 45 seconds.
Three minutes and 45 seconds, Vice Chair Lodge, thank you. And in response regarding Ms. Winkler, I think it is important to know that only, not only was she Mr. Howe's executive assistant for approximately eight to nine months, so that's obviously a position of trust, but also she represented the dispensary at the May 10, 2016 hearing before the mayor and city council. So obviously, she's more qualified than what is being mentioned. And without naming Mrs. Bach, when you look at the city council meeting from January 23rd, 2018, city attorney Ariel Collin said the following about Ms. Bach.
Excuse me, Mr. Dalbello?
This is related, this is related. It said, at least one of the dispensaries is placing the blame on the secretary to save their permit. I can mention that. That's quoting Mr. Collin. And then, to mention, when you look at the tape, which I requested, everyone look at the tape of the staff hearing officer hearing from December 20th, you'll also see an important exchange from Ms. Riordan and Mr. Howe. And remember, part of the ordinance is records. The statement of information is records. You know, this is not, they have legal effect. Records get lost, that's not a good excuse. There's records, maintaining records in the ordinance. You have to maintain records. Statement of information is records. They have legal effect. And a secretary is very important. The secretary takes minutes. Where are the minutes of this organization? When you look at the records, there are none. How many years has he been running this? There are no records of minutes? And he can't say, oh, well, because he's got a different secretary or whatever. Where are the records? He should have a copy of the records. It's ridiculous. And nonprofits, you have, the secretary keeps a record of the minutes. I, the president or CEO keeps a record of the minutes. And when there's a change of leadership on either position, it goes to the next person. So there is continuity. There is no continuity of records in this nonprofit. Just like, which, and as I mentioned, the statement of information has legal basis. Because if you do not have, file the statement of information, the state can find you. The state might even suspend you. That's the importance of a statement of information. It's unfortunate there's not a nonprofit attorney here that can further explain the importance of, of statement of information. But I will close with the exchange from Ms. Riordan and Mr. Howe relating to this. Ms. Riordan says, don't you keep a copy of your own minutes? Mr. Howe says, sometimes I do. Sometimes I don't because I move so much. Ms. Riordan said, it concerns me that your records are misplaced. Mr. Howe responded, that concerns me too. You know, that really concerns me. And as I mentioned, nonprofits are, are placed in great trust by the people. And if a nonprofit fails to file a statement of information, it could face a penalty assessed by the franchise tax board. That nonprofit could also be suspended. Who knows, if Ms. Bach didn't file that information, this nonprofit could have been suspended. And nonprofits, no matter its size or gross revenue, must also file an annual registration renewal report to the state attorney general. Has the Milpus dispensary filed this report? Thank you for your time and kind attention.
Please wrap it up. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concludes the presentations from the appellant, and Mr. Howe, and the public speakers, and so it's back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Vincent, the, the language in the section of 3185-250 that talks about suspension or revocations actually says something like, if I didn't write it down right, that it entered, it is, it is possible to pursue that if it violates any requirements of this section. Section is capitalized, so I would presume it refers to the entire 3185-250, the medical dispensary, the entire part of that ordinance, that entire chapter. Does that sound right? And so while you're looking, so the question I would, the specific question I would have is, the initial action was taken based on the two pieces of paper that were filed with Secretary of State that may have given notice that a, a structural organization change was taking place without notifying the city. So the staff hearing officer then has a hearing, and other information at that hearing comes up that is clearly within the scope of, of, I want to use your words, other violations within that section, so a lack of record keeping. Is the action at that hearing specifically only to address the ownership change potential and does not take into consideration other information that comes up at that hearing that could potentially be used for a revocation action?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Jordan, yes, the, the, the revocation hearing is specific to the issue that's brought to the staffing hearing officer's attention. In this particular case, the sole charge was that there was a transfer of control or an attempt to transfer control, not a failure to keep record, required records, not something else. Those, that information could form the basis for a different notice of revocation or suspension, but it, it does not, it, that, it doesn't morph into the, a decision on that topic that was not originally charged.
And would you say that it, that it should not be considered as part of the process at that time?
I would, I would say it this way. The decision of the staffing hearing officer is whether or not, well, let me back up because I was wanting to frame this topic for the commission as a whole. Ms. Ostringer brought a charge to the staff hearing officer that the Canopy Club or its managing members either did transfer control of the Canopy Club without a permission, or attempted to transfer control. It was her burden to prove that case to the staff hearing officer. The staff hearing officer had, had the role of deciding whether or not Ms. Ostringer proved her case or not. She made her decision. The Planning Commission's decision today on the abusive discretion standard of review is whether or not there is, Ms. Riordan, as the staff hearing officer, had a reasonable or fairly debatable basis for reaching the decision she reached. It's not your job to reach what may or may not be described as the correct decision.
Right.
Your decision as the Planning Commission on that, on, based on the standard of review that is before you, is whether or not Ms. Riordan had a reasonable basis or a fairly debatable reason to justify the decision she made. And so hopefully that not only answered your question, but also-
I'm really going to just transition from you to her, so. My other question for you was, do you know if anybody can go down, or wherever they go, and file the form with Secretary of State to change officers on any organization? Could I have done this?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioner Jordan, statements of information are, yes, they are important documents. I agree with Mr. DeBella. I also agree with Mr. Candy that they do not actually change the membership of the, of the corporation. That's done by a motion and action of that board and is reflected in the minutes of that board. The statement of information is just that. It's a statement of information to the Secretary of State. Corporate officers are required and expected to do that correctly. But to answer your original question, anyone can go online, and if they have the right information available to them, can submit a statement of information- information available to them, can submit a statement of information. It's done under penalty of perjury.
Sure.
So there's an issue there for somebody. But if you, you can do it by mistake, you can do it by fraud, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Then Ms. Reardon and I just have a couple of questions for you. And I think I can just lump these all together, because really, they're just, I'd be interested in a, just an affirmation from you that you did consider what I'm about to ask you, and you came to your decision after having considered those. And it's really, I think, just three points here, and that would be that you did have some discussion at the staff hearing officer about the lack of adequate record keeping. There were missing records, and so that was discussed there. And that, at that time, the, my words, the glaring absence of the person who actually made the change on, of the statement of information, says Ms. Bach, so there was no affidavit from her. And then Mr. Allen's use of the phrase, he just can't recall multiple times in his affidavit. So all those taken together, I think, were talked about over a long period of time, and I'd just like an affirmation from you that you recognized all those, you, you understood those, and you came to the decision that you did still considering those.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'll start with Mr. Vincent, have a few questions here. The first from our packet is, I'm looking at the canopies, I believe it's the operations plan, and there's a reference to our municipal code, section two-eight, point eight-zero, point one-three-zero, sections A through D, and it very clearly states under the section entitled, "Transfer Without Permission." So I'm going to have a question for you, Mr. Vincent, about interpretation of something. It is understood that any attempt to transfer our storefront collective dispensary permit without permission, either directly or indirectly, I'm going to ask you about indirectly, is a violation of this chapter, and the permit shall be deemed revoked. So could you help me understand what constitutes indirectly? Or, or both of these terms? How would, how would you advise us interpret directly and indirectly?
Certainly, if, if a managing member was to take their own action to transfer contract for the sale, to take some other direction themselves, I would say indirectly would be, again, if, if through another agent, the managing members attempted to transfer control. So again, I think it is important to find an element that the managing members, either themselves by their own actions, or by the actions of others at their direction, attempted to change control.
Okay.
Anything beyond that gets the, the, the agency, and I'm using that term not in a legal term, but as just the, the term "agency," begins to break down. If, because as I, as I said in answering the question that Commissioner Jordan had, anyone who has the right information can go onto the Secretary of State's website and fill out a statement of information form.
Correct.
And as long as you're willing to state that the information you're submitting is true and correct, and pay the twenty-dollar fee with your credit card, you can file it.
Right, yes, I'm familiar with that.
So it breaks down at that point.
Okay, so let's talk about indirectly. So if there is someone in our documentation that's been identified as an agent or who has agency or who has authority of the director or the managing director, operator, what's your opinion about, by that relationship, by that connection, that individual, and I'm thinking of Joseph Allen in this case, as the attorney retained by the permetee, having agency to indirectly transfer the, one or more of the officers that are identified on the statement of information form? I mean, is, is there no respond, getting to the responsibility and accountability issue pertaining to the indirectly and the rest that we're, we'll talk about in more detail.
Sure. So, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the way I would advise you in that regard, I would advise you to look at the administrative record, both the written materials and the verbal testimony that was presented to the staff hearing officer, and consider whether you find evidence that Mr. Allen or Ms. Bach had such authority. You're asking about whether, you know, someone, we're not, so we're moved away from direct. We're not talking about a direct action of a managing member, and whether or not an indirect action of somebody else acting at the direction of that managing member attempted or did transfer control. I would, my advice to you is, look to the administrative record and determine whether or not you find evidence that supports that direction. You know, it's the direction of a managing member instructing that third party to indirectly transfer the control.
Okay, so related to that, I want to ask you then, since we don't have a contract in our record between Mr. Howe and Mr. Allen, that would clearly describe the relationship and the role and the scope of authority, could you just help me, because we have so much paperwork here, is there any place else in the record that we've received that would identify Mr. Allen's role even by a title? I'm trying to recall from my memory, but quite frankly, the record's pretty substantial, and I'm not sure if we have that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Schwartz, a title in and of itself, it would not be particularly effective in identifying the, the authority or the direction that you would be looking for to find this indirect transfer.
Okay.
The, certainly, Mr. Allen was identified in the application materials as a representative, the legal representative of the Canopy Club. So, or at least the, the, the agent for service of process.
Okay.
And the, that by itself, I would not say supplies evidence that he had direction from the managing members or member of Canopy Club to change their officers. I don't see that, I haven't seen that evidence.
Okay, that's helpful. Now then, my next question to you, Mr. Vincent, is, it's attachment four in our package, and it's the Articles of Association for Canopy Club. I'm looking at the description for what's identified as the organizers. So I may need your help here. The original organizers have executed this agreement as shown below. Okay, first I'll read the executor's name, because I'm going to go to, again, who has, who had authority to do what. So we have Ryan Howe, Paul Simonian, Thomas Martin, Thomas Martin has shown up in the record, and there's discussion about him, and Stanley Cox. So there are four organizers, and it says here in the Articles of Association that these organizers, these four organizers, shall maintain all books, records, and funds of the collective. The organizers shall appoint officers and employees to act for the collective and to keep and preserve the funds and property of the collective. Again, this is attachment four as part of the larger, I'm sorry, Mr. Vincent, I don't know if there's a, it just says attachment four.
You can find it as BATE stamped eighty-three, Scott.
So I didn't know, again, you know, these questions that I'm going to kind of be driving at are to try to understand who had which express authority and which roles, to try to ascertain whether or not there was a direct or indirect, you know, an attempt to transfer, a transfer unauthorized, in other words, unapproved by the city, and that goes to our staff hearing officer's ultimate decision not to revoke the permit. So, back to you, Mr. Vincent, if you have any thoughts for me about the, the identity of these organizers? What does organizer even mean legally? And what are their responsibilities? And then what authority is granted to them as organizers for the canopy? Because Thomas Martin is one of the four.
Correct. You can have organizers of a corporation who are not yet officers.
Okay.
They, you can have, it's, it's typical to have an attorney who acts as an organizer or an incorporator, who gets the, the, the forms with the Secretary of State, begun, files the Articles of Incorporation, which creates, but once they're filed with the Secretary of State and registered, creates the, the corporation, but that does not mean that they are officers. From those incorporators or organizers come the officers, there would be an election that, there would be, and there would be some action identifying who the officers are. Once those officers are, are elected, then a statement of information is filed. It should be filed within a particular period of time. However, the absence of that, while it might affect its, the corporation's standing with the Secretary of State, it does not initially invalidate the corporation. It doesn't, the corporation doesn't go away immediately. The Secretary of State would have to make, take additional actions. There's, there's a graduated response to the failure to file. At some point, yes, the Secretary of State would potentially, you know, terminate or revoke the, the, the corporation. However, there are other steps that occur before that.
So without minutes of the board, the board of directors, that we could use as evidence for either authorized or unauthorized filing of the statement of information forms, are we then just without substantial evidence? I mean, I, that, that seems to be, after doing all this reading and watching the December twentieth hearing three times, that's, that's what I'm surmising, and it's just frustrating for us, because we're trying to, you know, be, make informed decisions today. But I'm, I'm sensing that we do not have sufficient documentation, legitimate documentation to do that.
Miss, Madam Chair and Commissioner Schwartz and the other commissioners, the, in the absence of a board motion and, and the minutes reflecting the, the vote on that motion, this record is generally, it, it's, you're dependent primarily on the testimony of Mr. Howe in, you know, before the staff hearing officer, as to whether or not there were, whether or not the officers of the corporation took action to change their membership.
Okay. I think then my next, thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Candy or Mr. Howe, if you could come to the microphone, please, I think I have a few questions for you. And, and Mr. Vincent can, can interject if I'm, if I'm going off script here. But I'm just going to proceed with what I think are important kind of fact-finding questions for me. I, I don't know, Mr. Candy, if you can comment further, but it seems to me to be, again, the nub of the issue, the lack of, in my opinion, of a substantial significant record by the officers, by the managers, by the board of directors. I, I can't even tell who, who constitutes the board at this point, maybe somebody could help me with that. I don't know if you or your client have a comment as to why these records have not been kept, and kept close, kept sufficiently such that the permetee would have access to them. And when I heard Mr. Howe state, this is part of the verbal record and the administrative record, that he's owned twenty-two companies in twenty-five years, I would think, that tells me, somebody's a savvy businessperson. They understand, they, they retain professionals, but they also know what their responsibilities are vis-à-vis the professionals and their legal obligations, not only with state filings but otherwise. So do you have any further comment for us about, and what we are to make about what I consider to be a problematic lack of record for us to use today?
Well, my only comment would be is, I agree, it's problematic. You know, we struggled with it before the staff hearing officer. You know, I'm informed that these records were entrusted to Joe Allen as corporate counsel. That's not an unusual situation, where a, a corporate lawyer will maintain the books and records of a company. Joe Allen moved his office, records disappeared. So, you know, we don't have those records.
Okay, can I, can I, I want to stop you right there while I'm, so, two connected questions, just two connected questions. So, Mr. Allen was entrusted to keep certain records for the organization, for the nonprofit. That's what, right, that's what you just said?
That's right.
So in entrusting Mr. Allen to do so, why wouldn't, why shouldn't I assume then, why shouldn't we assume, that the May third, two thousand sixteen statement of information form that was filed with Joseph Allen's name as the agent for service of process was authorized by Mr. Howe? That, to me, seems to be a connection of the dots that's logical. If he's keeping the records and he's allowed as the attorney for Mr. Howe to make filings, this is a filing by that individual, the attorney. But somehow, this is unauthorized.
Wait, wait, Peter. Please. Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I think any answer that Mr. Candy would give you that is not within the record that was available to Ms. Reardon is beyond the administrative record. So...
Is there a written record that Mr., that Mr. Allen, as the attorney for the permetee which has been verbally acknowledged by the permetee in the December twentieth hearing, is there any, is there any written contract with this individual that substantiates that in fact, he, he was an attorney? He had certain legal responsibilities and a certain level of authority to keep records, to submit filings to the Secretary of State? I mean, gosh, I don't know who retains an attorney without a contract, but I'll ask you that.
Well, no, again, the, the absence, the presence or absence of such a contract, it must be in that administrative record.
Is it in our administrative record? Or maybe I'll just ask that bluntly?
It is not.
No. Okay. Again, critical piece, piece of missing information. Okay, Mr. Candy, let me, let me continue.
Before you do, let me double-check with Mr. Vincent. What we're to decide is whether or not the staff hearing officer's action was reasonable. Is that correct?
Yes, again, with the, with the abuse of discretion standard of review, the planning commission's decision is to review the action of the staff hearing officer and decide whether there was a reasonable or fairly debatable justification for her decision. And one place to look to understand her decision, I would refer you to the written motion, you know, the, the written resolution in which she outlines her decision.
Yes.
The facts on which she relied, and the conclusions, conclusions of law that she reached. And so that's, that would be a good starting place for the commissioners to launch off from. And if you have questions of the, the staff hearing officer as to the reasons why conclusions were made or what evidence was relied on, I hope that it's, it, for the most part, I would expect to find it in the resolution. That's what we try to, to help with, to make those logical connections, to make your job as the appellate body easier, so you can find, you know, follow those connections. But that, that would be a good place to start from, is, is the, the resolution of the decision.
Okay, I'll come back to Mr. Candy, and I'll go to Ms. Reardon, thank you, Mr. Candy.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, yes.
Oh, yes, Mr. Doymas, hello.
And first, I apologize for coming late. For some reason, this hearing was scheduled at two o'clock on my calendar, so I sincerely apologize to the commission.
Do you have something to add that would be helpful?
I do have something to add. My, my role in this hearing was to advise, to be counsel for hearing officer Ms. Reardon. That question in terms of a contract or representation, I believe, did come up in terms of the hearing, but the perfectly acceptable answer, not to have a contract or any kind of agreement included as part of the record, is that may contain attorney-client information in terms of the scope of the representation, et cetera. So, from our viewpoint, it was perfectly acceptable not to include in the record, because those type of agreements may be attorney-client privileged documentation.
I understand. So, Mr. Vincent, maybe you could, or any of the staff really, could direct us... So, Mr. Vincent, maybe you could, or any of the staff really, could direct us all to look at what you consider to be one of the most critical documents to base our findings on today? Mr. Vincent?
Sure. So, the resolution, the staff hearing officer's resolution on the decision regarding the revocation or suspension of the storefront collective dispensary permit is found as attachment B to your staff report. Paging, page numbering isn't, it follows, it immediately follows Mr. Dibello's appeal letter.
So let me go to Mr. Duymus, I'm sorry, did you want, were you going to say anything else, Mr. Duymus?
No, I wasn't, thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Riordan, I guess my only question for you is, and excuse me for kind of pondering this as I'm asking it, because there seems to be so many problematic aspects, to me, of the record. The actual record, the substantial, clear, factual record upon which you based your decision. So maybe you could just take a moment, if you would, and elaborate a bit today, beyond the resolution, how you were able to find what I consider to be a very thin record as substantiating neither a direct or indirect transfer of control, or attempt to transfer the control? Is there anything else outside the resolution, maybe I can simply ask you that way, that informed your decision?
Yeah. Vice Chair Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz, I too was troubled by the lack of information, and you said you heard, reviewed the hearing three times. I kept questioning, it was beyond...
I heard you, yes, exactly.
...fathom that there was no records, that he owned all these corporations, never submitted, never reviewed a statement of information. All this stuff was coming out, raised concerns, but what I was charged with, with is to look at the whole of the records. So I took the statements in the operation plan, that Mr. Howe was aware of the process necessary to change the management members, the affidavits that he signed, his testimony at the public hearing, and then the, the part that, that tipped the scale for me was the Exhibit J, or K, in the, in the record, where it has these summaries of the actions that have occurred, the city actions, and one of them was that Mr. Howe submitted a request for changes to the approved operation plan, and one of the changes was to identify additional management members beyond himself. And that was submitted prior to the NOV that the City Attorney's Office issued regarding the statement of information, so when...
Could you remind us of the date of that, as we follow along?
It's June 27 of 2017. That's when they submitted a revised application for staff review, and so that...
June 20 of 2017?
No, June 27.
27 of 2017.
Yeah. And, and it actually was at the first public hearing that was scheduled on that request before the staff hearing officer in September, where I questioned the statements of information and what role that they had. And Mr. Howe was, told me at the hearing, he wasn't aware of it, and then I was informed to continue the hearing so that that could be looked into further. And then I, then, in the intervening time between the revocation hearing, I did hold a hearing and I approved additional management members. So I took that into account, that the statements in the operation plan by Mr. Howe, and that is outlined in my resolution, I know you asked me outside of the resolution, but...
Yeah, or anything to explain further, whatever is helpful.
Yeah, so I took the statements that were in the operation plan, the statements in Mr. Howe's affidavit that was submitted as part of the, Mr. Candy's brief, and also the testimony at the hearing, that he was aware of it, he never authorized this, and I was, you know, frustrated that there was no records, that they were all lost, you know, that, that's poor management, I think. But what I had in front of me, there was enough information that I felt that, in the absence of any other information, that those filings in of themselves did not constitute an attempt to transfer.
I think I may just have one more question for you. So when I, we go back to the organizers I mentioned, okay, and the articles of, was it association or incorporation, and Thomas Martin is listed as one of the original organizers, and I heard from Mr. Vincent, that an organizer isn't, I understand this is not necessarily a managing member, or a director, an officer, but then we have Thomas Martin's signature, or not his signature, excuse me, his name, mentioned as the officer secretary in the May 3, 2016 filing. So if it's been alleged or asserted that Thomas Martin was not an officer, was not a manager, and these, these forms were not authorized to be filed, help me understand how you were able to find that credible, when Thomas Martin's name is both an organizer in the original documentation, and he appears in the May 2016 SOI, Statement of Information, as an officer? So is he, was he an officer or not, in your opinion? Was, was he, I know this is speculation, that's what's difficult with the lack of What do we make of Thomas Martin being both an original organizer and appearing in the statement of information form, and yet, Mr. Howe claims the statement of information is unauthorized? So I want to, I, and I'll just, so I'll stop there and ask you kind of to better, better explain to me what you made of that, because I don't see that explained in the resolution.
I think that was part of the confusion on Mr. Allen's part, because Daniel Winkler, who's listed on the second SOI as the secretary, she's not listed in the statement of, she's not listed in the operation plan anywhere. She was at the hearing, she was, you know, before the City Council on Appeal, I think she did the fancy little video that was shown and stuff, but she's not mentioned anywhere else. So I can't explain why Thomas was put here, could have been part of Mr. Allen's confusion of who to put there. I just took the record as a whole, and...
And then could you, lastly, could you just remind me, and I apologize if it's somewhere in our packet, again, so many documents, do we have an affidavit from Daniel Winkler and Thomas Martin as to their roles in the filings of these SOIs?
Not in my, not in the record that was before me. Subsequently, it was submitted, but it was not submitted at the time of my hearing.
I think I'll just, I'll stop there and hear what the rest of my colleagues ask, and I may have more later. Thank you.
Commissioner Campanella?
Yeah, question for our Attorney's Office. If in fact, an opinion is made by the Attorney's Office that there's a violation and the license should be revoked, based upon their interpretation of the, of the ordinance municipal code, if that's the case, why would it be referred to the staff hearing officer? What could change, what's the auspices that would change the mind of that decision?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Campanella, while it is not a direct parallel, I'll give you this. The role of the district attorney is to bring, is to bring criminal charges. The role of the district attorney is that they do not bring charges that they cannot prove, that they do not believe that they can prove beyond a reasonable doubt. However, there are cases where judges or juries acquit criminal defendants. In this particular case, our standard is not beyond a reasonable doubt. However, it does mean, you know, and Ms. Ostringer believed that she had a credible case to present to the staff hearing officer. When the staff hearing officer was presented that case and looked at the evidence before her, she concluded that Ms. Ostringer had not met her burden to prove beyond, not beyond a reasonable doubt, but by clear and convincing evidence, that a transfer or an attempt to transfer had, had occurred. And so that's why she, I mean, I'm summarizing essentially the information found in her resolution, that Ms. Ostringer had not met her burden to prove.
Okay, that clears things up, because I didn't know, process-wise, how, why it was referred, but, so that's what it's open to. So the, the mere fact that these statements were filed, there's still the ability to discuss, see what happened, use, and use discretion to see whether that really was grounds for revocation by the staff hearing officer. That's part of the process.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I guess my other question is, when the statement of operations was filed at, I think, June 27, is that correct? Is it, the, statement of operations with new officers?
The revised operation plan?
Yeah.
Correct. That was in June.
Did that contain new officers?
That was one of the changes, there was other changes outlined in it.
Okay. So when that is presented, is, are there minutes or resolutions required for staff to review, staff hearing officers to review, that those, those were approved by the board or the executives of the dispensary? Those changes were approved in minutes?
I don't recall those being, so you're talking about resolutions of the Canopy Club Board versus a resolution of the staff hearing officer, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, correct. No, I, I do not recall any minutes being submitted with that. I just had the revised operation plan as my documentation.
Okay. One other question, are, there were some comments made that annually you have to file with the state? Do you have to update your statement of, of officers? Does that have to go to the state every year, or annually?
Maybe an attorney can answer that more, but my understanding, it's required every two years, based on what ma, what month you originally submitted your corporation documents, or at the time that there was a change in the corporate officers.
Okay. So if we have this May and July date, do we know when the original one was filed? And what I'm getting at, is it possible that the Secretary of this office has a tickler file that says, I have to submit something by X date, whether she was instructed to or not? Do we know the date that they would have to refile by, when two years would be up?
That was not part of my record, but you can look on the State of California's website, and it gives you a timeline of when you're supposed to file it.
Okay, thank you.
At the beginning and with changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, Commissioner Higgins?
So, to Mr. Vincent, is the lack of a requirement for minutes, corporate minutes, to be submitted sort of a flaw in our process? Or, or should we be more in our process or procedures for this past construct of these medical dispensaries? Should we have outlined in more detail, you know, those procedures to keep those minutes or keep those records? We're grappling with this, this issue so much, so I, you know, is there a flaw in our process then, to substantiate these ownership issues?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Higgins, it's, it's difficult to get so far as to say that a flaw in the process. Obviously, these decisions would be much easier to make if we had those kinds of records before us. We, the, the city, in, in the land use application process, relies on the good faith of applicants all the time, whether it's telling us that the fence that you're getting your building permit for is actually on your property. That, I mean, we, we rely on that all the time. People will come in and ask for a building permit to put up a fence, they represent on, sometimes with a site plan, sometimes without a site plan, they just say, it's, it's on my property. We're, we're just kind of going on blind faith that that's true. I, I'm not submitting that that's necessarily the best thing, but at the same time, I guarantee you the building and safety does not want to have to get a survey for every fence permit. So somewhere in between what we're suffering through today and the, and getting a survey for every fence permit is probably the sweet spot.
Okay. So notwithstanding our, our procedures, or the potential that we could have cleaner procedures, that's not really for us to consider today in terms of this, this decision, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to bend your analogy that you used a couple of minutes ago, maybe beyond recognition. If we're the, sort of the judge and jury here, and this moves on to the appellate court, you know, in the form of the City Council, at some ca, at some point, does the DA get involved in the form of the Supreme Court, when Ms. Ostringer is not convinced that, or the City Attorney's Office, generally speaking, is, is not convinced that there isn't yet still a case after this runs its course through our local procedures? Or what's in store, or are we not allowed to peek behind that curtain at this point?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Higgins, it, the, you're correct in that if someone could appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, it would go to the City Council, that would be the final action by the city. Beyond that, it would go to potentially Superior Court, but it would not be a criminal action. It would be, again, remember, this is about, it would be a civil action about a permit, and in that case, it would likely be a writ of mandamus cause of action, where the party seeking the writ would be asking the court to force the City Council to come to a certain conclusion, presumably a conclusion different than the one they came, they come to, if they, if it gets to them, based on that they have a mandated duty to come to that conclusion. And, but, you know, it's not likely that it's going to happen.
Okay, so yeah, I guess I'll ask it a different way. Are, is this going to be exhausted here? And you, and I can appreciate if you, if you're not going to tell me up or down whether or not Ms. Ostringer or the City Attorney's Office is going to let this play out locally, and then let that procedure then end there, but that's my question.
I would answer the question this way. The, the City Attorney's Office is not, is, I work for the City Attorney's Office. I'm advising the Planning Commission in my role as your counsel. Mr. Duymus is also from our office, but she, he's here advising the staff hearing officer in her capacity. We are not prosecuting this case any further. Ms. Ostringer is not here. This is an appeal of the staff hearing officer's decision by, on that case already. We are, we are here and will follow the decision of the Planning Commission or City Council when that happens.
Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair and Commissioner Higgins, Ms. Ostringer did not appeal this decision, and therefore, she's abandoned any appeal further, because she did not exhaust her administrative remedies. So there is no appeal, at least from a prosecutorial aspect of the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you.
And I'd like to remind the commissioners, that again, that what is before us is whether or not the staff hearing officer acted reasonably, given the information that she had at the time.
Yeah, he started it with that analogy.
Commissioner Thompson?
Well, he started it. I have a follow-up sort of question. I'm very familiar with filings for nonprofits, based upon several boards that I'm on, nonprofit boards, and I'm not familiar that the Secretary of State forwards the SS1 to any other agencies. So how did Ms. Ostringer come to know that this SS1 was filed with the wrong names and bring it to the show in the first place? This may be germane to us in the future, since we have the potential for several other marijuana retail stores here in the town, and so we'll be going through this again in the future, it would seem like. So how, how did we come in, in possession of this mythical incorrect SS1?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Thompson, I'm not quite sure how Ms. Ostringer became initially aware of the statement of information. However, you can go on the Secretary of State's website.
Right.
And find it.
Right.
And so, when it came to her attention, she did that search and found a copy of, of the statements of information on the Secretary of State's website.
So potentially, we will be going through this same kind of a hearing, again, in the future, for every, every item that comes up? If there's an incorrect form filed?
Yeah, I would hope that, that hearings like this, and the hearings that we had regarding 3617 State Street, provide ample encouragement to permates to keep their bookkeeping straight.
Keep the records in the books straight, right.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, your light is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple more questions. Mr. Candy, I have another question for you. I want to ask you about Danielle Winkler. And then I'm going to come back to Ms. Riordan, so it's the two of you together regarding Danielle, Danielle Winkler. So there's a statement by the staff hearing officer or a, an assertion in the staff hearing officer resolution, number 075-17, that, this is point number 20, if anybody's looking at this document, that Ryan Howe stated that Danielle Winkler was his executive assistant for approximately eight to nine months. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I don't have the, you know.
But that was a relationship. I mean, that was the business relationship between Mr. Howe and Danielle Winkler. And you don't know when that eight to nine month period occurred. And I'm asking you because again, let's go back to the July 29, 2016 statement of information. Danielle Winkler now appears as the new officer secretary. This is the change from the May statement of information form that was filed where Thomas Martin was the officer secretary. So several months later, we now have Danielle Winkler on the form with, with Mr. Howe as CEO and CFO, Joseph Allen being, again, the service processor. But Mr. Howe's own executive assistant appears as the officer secretary, and yet there's an assertion by you and Mr. Howe that this form is unauthorized, this filing is unauthorized. So how is it his executive assistant somehow appeared on the SOI and is, this is unauthorized?
Well, I, I don't know how she appeared on the SOI. All I can say is that an executive assistant, a personal executive assistant is not necessarily appointed as an officer of a corporation. Mr. Howe could have a number of entities, of which he is the sole director and sole officer, and, you know, that doesn't mean that his personal executive assistant has any role in any of those corporations. He would need to appoint that person to an officer position in one of those entities in order for that to occur. And we've got testimony from him that says that that did not happen with respect to Canopy. So I don't know how, we don't know how the statement of information with Danielle Winkler's name on it was filed.
So it's your, I'm sorry.
We just know that Mr. Howe never appointed her as an officer.
Never authorized her for her name to appear with her personal address, all of her personal information on the Secretary of State form.
That's right.
No idea, no authorization. Couldn't imagine how this happened, right? That's just happened without his knowledge.
I think there is testimony and speculation.
Yeah.
On the part of Mr. Howe at the hearing, at the hearing before the staff hearing officer as to how this might have happened.
Yeah, but I'm trying to just go on the record as we've been continually advised by, by Mr. Vincent.
That's part of the record and there's speculation.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have, so back to Ms. Riordan. I think these are my final questions to you in trying to perform triage of this information that we have. So back to the resolution, your resolution, Ms. Riordan. Under findings of fact, there are a number of statements. So I'm looking page two, three, and even this Danielle Winkler comment on page five. There are a number of references to the role Jos, in your resolution. Can I say your resolution? Yeah, that you authored. Pertaining to Joseph Allen's role, based upon the record, based upon your interpretation of the record and the hearing that occurred, the verbal testimony and the written record from December 20th. So finding a fact, number one, in 2015, Ryan Howe engaged Joseph Allen as corporate counsel to perform legal work for Canopy, including incorporating, organizing, and so forth. So this, this starts the, the relationship, the documented relationship, yes, without a scope of work and without a contract, so we can see what that actually, you know, included or entailed, but that's statement number one. Now we go on chronologically, still in 2015, and this is your item number three, your statement three, Joseph Allen filed articles of incorporation for the Canopy Club. I don't want to ask Mr. Candy to come back up, but maybe a nod. That was authorized, correct? That was part of the application? The articles of incorporation filed, we have those articles of incorporation as part of our city record, correct, Mr. Vincent? Yes. So this is point number two regarding the relationship between the permatee, or Mr. Howe, and Joseph Allen. Okay. Then we go on, item number seven, the operations plan identifies Joseph Allen, Attorney of Law, as the designated agent for service of process. Item number eight, here, here, this is the record that's being built regarding, why am I going through this? This is the record that's been built pertaining to the authorized relationship between the permatee and legal counsel. Number eight, the operations plan provides the organization is represented by Joseph Allen and will act in full compliance with the law regulations and conditions set by the ordinance. I'm not going to go back to Thomas Martin, there's, number nine is about Thomas Martin, and I'll jump to page five. This is number 20. This is what I referenced regarding Danielle Winkler being the executive assistant. But there are other references, I don't want to point out and take the time today, to go through a number of other points you've made to identify or confirm from the record that Joseph Allen from the beginning had consistent and, I'll say, specific roles pertaining to how the organization was established, codifying that through documentation, whatever the legal requirements are through the documentation and the filings. So I'm really at a loss. I know I'm sliding into just a preliminary comment, Madam Chair. I'm just really at a loss as to not understand, Ms. Riordan, and you know I respect you greatly, so it's not about that, how you were able to arrive at a position of not revoking the permit when it seems to me from the record that we have before us, there is an early and ongoing authorized role by the attorney. And yet, I shouldn't make the leap between that and the Secretary of State filings, these allegedly being unauthorized. Seems to me there's a chain of authority, I don't know if I should call it that, Mr. Vincent, but a chain of chronological and sequential authority being given to, granted to, the attorney of record, and yet all of a sudden, the filings are unauthorized by the permatee. So I'm really having difficulty understanding how you pulled it all together to ultimately make a decision of not revoking based upon our, again, our narrow standard of determination.
Okay, thanks.
But based on the record nonetheless.
Right. Vice Chair, Commissioner Schwartz. There's also other statements of fact or findings of fact in the resolution that points to what Mr. Howe knew would hap, was to occur. There's like number six, it says the operation plan identifies Ryan Howe as a sole management member. There's number eight, or number nine.
But a management member doesn't necessarily mean you haven't retained professionals to take certain action and conduct certain business for you. We all do this. We all have experience, whether CPAs, attorneys, you know, you name it.
I'm just trying to explain my reasoning on the resolution, so. And then when you look at other statements in the statement of facts, there's, it talks about the, the manage, the membership advisories.
What number, if you don't mind?
Number 10. The, the membership advisors are only members of the Canopy and do not serve as management employees or on the board of directors. The following one, number 11, it says that Mr. Howe will not transfer ownership or control of his storefront collective dispensary permit to another person or entity unless and until the transferee obtains an amendment to the permit from the staff hearing officer pursuant to the permitting requirements of this chapter. And this is stating, this is referring to statements in the operation plan. And it, and it states that it is understood that any attempt to transfer the storefront dispensive, dispensary permit without permission, either directly or indirectly, is a violation of the chapter. There's number 12 that states the operation plan includes a signed statement under the penalty of perjury that Ryan Stephen Howe is the founder of the club, that he has personal information, knowledge of the information contained in the application, and that it is completed under the supervision of himself and that the information is true and correct.
May I ask you something about number 11?
Yeah.
And then I'm going to leave it at this because, you know, my colleagues probably want to move into comments and, and close. For a permatee or an operator to state that they won't do something, I, Mr. Howe will not transfer ownership or control, it's like, "I solemnly swear I won't do it." And then we have these issues of the record, written and verbal. So what I'm really trying to understand from you is there's, there's a statement that, from a permatee or an applicant or property, an operator, that they won't do something. But then the question it seems before us today is what actually happened? Was it authorized? Does it constitute a transfer or an attempt to transfer? So someone's saying, "I promise I won't do it, but that's not record. That's just saying I won't do it."
What it came down to me that tipped it was what I pointed out originally, is that revised operation plan that was submitted in, not in response to the city coming after him, but it was submitted with revisions to the operation plan, one of which was new management members. To me, that showed, that, that showed the implementation of these statements in the operation plan, that he understood the process that was necessary to go through to get new management members and that he was following that process. So that played more weight, that played weight in my decision that, yes, the record is really unclear and it's, you know, he said, she said, but this was an actual action item that he did that, that I could point to that.
And which number is that, that you're?
That's bait stamped 225. It's in.
But I mean, is it, is it in the res, is it?
Yes.
What number is it in the resolution?
Number nine.
Number nine? Okay.
I'm sorry, number eight, huh?
So Joseph, wait a minute. What, what date are we referring to? Number eight, the operations plan? Still is referring to Joseph Allen? You don't, I don't think you mean number eight, do you?
I'm talk, sorry, I was talking about my staff hearing officer resolution.
Oh, yes.
Page seven, number eight.
Oh, page seven, okay.
Number eight.
Page seven?
That Ryan Howe.
Oh, that's a new, oh, conclusions of law. It's a different section. Okay, thank you. Okay, now I'm, I'm now following you. I know where you are now. Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, if I ask, may I say one thing? While not, I think Ms. Riordan expressed her basis for decision quite clearly and that's the source of where you should rely upon, but without going outside of that and also divulging any communication between us, I do want to stick to how I guided it in terms of the scope of the decision, in terms of weighing the evidence and what's in the rec, and what's directly in the resolution. First of all, it's, it's like Mr. Vincent said earlier, it's preponderance of the evidence, so it's more likely or not. Was there more likely than not a transfer of the permit? The information that the hearing officer must rely upon was brought forth by Ms. Ostringer, the city attorney's office, in her role. That is strictly what she, as the hearing officer, must rely upon. Nothing else, not going outside of that. Of course, Mr. Howe can rebut it by any evidence he wants to produce, whether he has them or not, but still the initial burden to prove is Ms. Ostringer and whether it's more likely or not. And I think based on what Ms. Riordan said, based on both that Mr. Howe is aware of the process, based also on what appears directly in the resolution that appears to be a confusion with Mr. Allen of why he filed two statements of information within a month apart, and also it was raised at the hearing, which was allowed to be used in the decision, is that Mr. Allen had obviously issues at the state bar too at that time, which also could lead to the confusion of everything. Those were, that is the basis of the decision which she could take into account. So her standard review is, was it more likely or not that a transfer occurred or an attempt to transfer occurred based on the evidence provided? And the only evidence provided, obviously, were the statement of information, nothing outside of that. So that is what Ms. Riordan was beholden to in terms of examining and looking at for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duymus. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any more questions from the commission? Okay. Comments?
Ben first, so I know staff will appreciate this, but I am not going to be able to make any decision that supports the appeal. I will deny the appeal based on what we've heard today. You're staring at me blankly, but I know you want to hear that first before I talk about the reasons. It's, I think, I keep hearing the same points over and over again, so I don't know that we need to go through them, but a couple of the key points to me are that, as I asked Ms. Riordan, the several, three or four issues that I had with concerns that I heard at the hearing, and I'm satisfied both with her answer and the information in the resolution that she considered those and came to what she thought was a reasonable decision. I'm basing reasonable on not just my own frame of reference, but how I think other people would also view that process and the, and the consideration of that information. And I think clearly to me, if it's a math equation, what's after the equal sign might be a different number for one person as for the other in this particular case. And that then raises or credibilizes the decision as being reasonable. A couple of other things that I think have been mentioned but are also key to me is that Mr. Howe's affidavit was very, very clear in that he did not, did not know of and played no role in a decision or process to make those two filings. Everybody else said they can't remember, which of course just conjures up all kinds of mischief and gives them carte blanche for the future. But Mr. Howe, the guy who was the guy at Canopy, was very, very clear in his affidavit testimony that he played no role in processing, approving, or asking for those pieces of paper to be submitted. And I also would then hearken back to Ms. Riordan's point also, is that before he was even notified of the potential violation for those filings, he already exhibited knowledge that he knew that that was part of the process because he was in asking for a change before he'd even been notified by the city. So it's clear to me that he knew that there was a process to be followed and he was just as surprised to find out that somewhere somebody else had paid their $20 and, and filed something without his approval. Some of the words I've, I've heard up here have been troublesome to me in that with the, words like problematic or significant issues because those are words that are ascribing a basis to something that's already in the record and it's not in the record as significant or problematic. They were clearly not significant or problematic to the staff hearing officer who then reached a decision. So I think the focus should, as has been said many times, should be on how the staff hearing officer got to where she got and whether it was reasonable. And questions to the applicant or Canopy or their representative in this particular case really aren't material to me as to whether they thought something was problematic or significant or, or otherwise, because that was all, that was all put forth in the hearing and Ms. Riordan made a decision. It's also significant to me that the city did not appeal this action. So our city attorney, however they find out about these violations, was a party just out there in the public like anybody else, went through the process, a decision was made that was not supportive of the, of the city attorney's process to file a notice of appeal and the city is not before us asking for us to appeal that decision. So I also think that, I've said this before and I will say it again, I think I, I'm sure, I'm sure I said this before to Mr. Howe, sitting up here, but I've been part of every I'm sure I said this before to Mr. Howe, sitting up here, but I've been part of every approval or appeal of a medical dispensary in this town so far. And I have said the same thing over and over again, as those applicants have sat in front of us, and I'll just say it without any ill will, you can take it that way, but for having an entire chapter of the municipal ordinance written for the process of getting this approved, this, the representatives that go through this are continually way too unsophisticated or even sloppy, okay? And this is a, this is a bone of contention for me. I'm happy to see that, as we move to the retail one, that we're actually doing RFPs, and we'll grade them, because the alternate was true for MMDs. It was kind of just like, set some parameters and let them throw whatever up there, and then crush your fingers. But I think, Mr. Howe, my message to you would be, you've dodged a bullet here, and I think you've legitimately dodged a bullet, in my opinion. But the, it's clear that there are a lot of people watching this, and proactively looking for ways to watch it, and so I think you really need to up your game. I'm appreciative, I'll say, I'm not considering what was submitted yesterday by Mr. Candy, but you submitted the same thing in December for the staff hearing officer's hearing, pretty much, except for the two additional affidavits. And I appreciate the way you, in your letter, in your documentation, that you led us through the process, and you refuted the items. It was clear, it brought some sanity to what has been in the past with these type of permits, has been sort of mayhem and sloppiness, and if that's what it takes to get that type of representation, then I'm all, I'm all for that. And then finally, Mr. Dalvello, the twenty-some pages you submitted for an appeal could probably be one page. I personally find, I've not been a supporter personally, in my frame of reference, of medical marijuana dispensaries. So I appreciate getting the chance to look at this again, but I find most of that appeal language, the tone, to be distasteful, and just argumentative, and character assassination to a point that it's, that it doesn't do you any good, and it's really off-putting. I would appreciate seeing more focus on the issues, and less focus on personal attacks. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I don't know how much more discussion people want to have, but before we do discussion, I'd say that, from my position, based upon the record and the testimony we've heard today, there is no evidence of abuse of discretion on the part of the staff hearing officer. And therefore, I would move to deny the appeal and not revoke the permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, my motion made in second, to deny the appeal and uphold the decision, the decision of the staff hearing officer. Anybody else? Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, Mr. Dalvello, I appreciated your letter. You know, I read the whole thing. I thought it was, it created a good storyline. It was dramatic. You're a good writer. I, and I appreciate your interest in the community and your campaign. I think it's, you know, we need more people like you, doing what you do, for the city to pay attention and to help us, you know, focus our lens when we need to. On the other hand, part of your letter, I think, was turning me the other direction, because of where it was coming from, your basis for, for your interest. You know, I may agree with you in some parts, some of your arguments and philosophy, but, you know, we here have to put, have to implement the direction and the laws that the city council makes, and, you know, long story short, is I don't find that we've done anything wrong here, we collectively, the city and the staff hearing officer procedure. You know, a lot of what I think you're getting at is trying to put, you know, the toothpaste back in the tube with the city program, city program, and now what is the state law for allowing these dispensaries to, you know, be in our city. So we're going to do our best, and I'm, it's unfortunate, this construct still exists. I think it's got a lot of holes in it, I think, as we discussed today. I'm looking forward to the next program to be a little bit more defendable and enforceable through the city administrator's office. But I don't find that Ms. Reardon made any errors. For sure, the argument to me hinges on Mr., the applicant's application back to the city to make those changes. And, you know, maybe there was something going on there, but, but I don't know that I can sit here and, on the opposite, prove that something was happening on a conspiracy level to unwind his permit intentionally, by some mysterious force, or somebody that didn't want it to happen. So that burden of proof, thank God, is not ours to live up to today, and nor was it Ms. Reardon's. So I'll, I'll support the project.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make a few comments before I get right to the heart of how I'm going to vote today. First, to Ms. Reardon. And in watching the December 20 hearing three times, I heard very clearly and saw you struggling with the testimony, with the record, in trying to interpret it and make a sound decision. It goes beyond just words on a page and words provided during public comment, and I saw you really trying to put it all together, and make both common sense, and rational sense, and legal sense with Mr. Duomois's counsel about that. And even though I pressed you pretty assertively on the resolution, I appreciate and I support what you have documented in the resolution. So I don't find that you've made an error in that regard. Now I'm going to go to Mr. Dalvello, who's the appellant, to pick up on a few themes that you've heard from some of my colleagues, Mr. Dalvello. I understand your opposition to what appears to be any medical marijuana dispensary on the, in our east side community, close to your homes, your family's homes. You've mentioned this in a number of hearings before. I would just recommend to you that if you have larger issues with dispensaries, there are other venues to use to try to influence regulatory outcomes for that. As you know, medical marijuana dispensaries in number and locations, that's like asked and answered by the planning commission years ago, by the city council. So for you to try to reopen the issues of location, et cetera, these vehicles are not, these forums are not going to be effective, if you and others in the east side are concerned. I would also suggest that you kind of take it down a notch, in terms of your comments about the character of any property owner, any permutee, any dispensary operator. It doesn't serve you well, and it is difficult to take. And I don't think any of us need to go there. We don't want to do that. We can take the high road when we discuss these matters of community planning and community So I think that's it. Today, I'm not going to be supporting your appeal, even though I, I've read everything, and I understand very clearly what's yours. And also, the many signatures that came in from community members, that wasn't really discussed today, it wasn't touched on, but I did also look at every signature on every page that was provided. So I see the number of residents, primarily in the east side, who, on the face of it, seemed like they had some concern, one or more concerns about the dispensary. I want to close to you, Mr. Dalvello, by just saying, whether or not this dispensary opens, now that Proposition 64 has passed, and we will also now have recreational outlets in our community, separate from, or possibly combined with, medical marijuana dispensaries. I think if you can find your way to moving in and communicating and building relationships, and also, this goes to the operators' owners' permutees of the cannabis outlets as well, to find your way to having an understanding and working more cooperatively together on concerns. It's, we're a very small community, we have to do that. This isn't, these kinds of venues and these types of appeals, I don't think are the most effective way for us to understand what one another's concerns are, and how we can try to reasonably address and minimize the concerns. So I'll leave it with that. Now to Mr. Candy and Mr. Howe. I'm going to say something that I've said regarding other medical marijuana dispensary, both applications, but revocations. I have served on this commission for the same period of time as Commissioner Jordan. So we've seen, we've been involved in the same applications, potential revocations, and a myriad of other issues. I personally know that there are legitimate members of our community, or those, community members who have legitimate needs for medical marijuana, for the use of medical marijuana. And it distresses me that we still, after a number of years now, do not have one open that's fully compliant, and can provide, through ethical operations and legal operations, the much-needed resource that our community members should have access to. So the reason I'm saying that to you, Mr. Howe, is, if in fact, you're able to open the canopy, I can't impress upon you enough the importance of knowing and following our ordinance, and all of your commitments to the city under the ordinance, and regarding, and within the confines of your permit, and then all of the other legal documents. You personally, this is my plea to you personally, and with your attorney sitting next to you, to really take this under, under your own wing, learn, know, and follow, and not rely, as I feel you have over-relied on, those who, whether they've not served you well, or we'll fill in the blank there, who knows what happened? It's a question mark. We don't have that documentation and that evidence. But it's now happened a number of times, while I've served on this commission, that medical marijuana operator owners, in my opinion, this is, I'm not casting aspersions on them personally, do not seem to take seriously enough the concerns, the risks, the potential impacts to neighborhoods of this type of business. You know, if we were starting with alcohol, if this were a burgeoning alcohol business, liquor business, I'd probably be saying the same thing. So there are different kinds of businesses, and some warrant. And the city should take more aggressive, and more serious, and more legally stringent steps to help our community protect, but allow for thriving, legally compliant businesses, and again, moving into recreational cannabis, we will have that, too. So I'm just going to ask you, I really hope this, we don't see this again, this particular issue, or even on any other permit that we approve, but it means, I think, that there needs to be, and you're involved with this community, with the cannabis community, I know that. I think there needs to be a new era of professionalism, business professionalism, that is taken up, really taken very seriously by the cannabis industry, now coming into the dawn of a new era, California and elsewhere. And I, so I'm hoping that out of today's hearing, maybe, whatever the closure is for your, for the canopy, that you revisit that for yourself, and with your business partners, and find a new way forward. So with that, I will be denying the appeal, and supporting the staff hearing officer decision.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. I do appreciate today clarification by the, our attorneys, both advising the planning commission, as well as the staff hearing officer. I appreciate the fact that there is discretion allowed, based on, after a revocation, that there is a way for the applicant to try to clear the air, so to speak. There's a pretty much of a hair trigger on revocation, and it's not just some formality with filing. It's, we're going to see it in operations, there's going to be complaints, security wasn't there, or anything else that could occur. But at least we leave, revoke first, and then we leave a venue for a way to try to explain. And then, through the staff hearing officer's discretion, based on preponderance of evidence, to see whether that revocation can be overturned or not, based upon the particular situations in that case. And I think that's probably all we could hope for, as a community, protection, as well as reasonableness, and a fair hearing. So I appreciate the role that the staff hearing officer took here. I think the amendment to the approved operating plan was a big deal, to make you convinced that, you know, there's an honest way of reporting this, and sticking with the program. If it were not there, you may have made some other decision on this. But I think, based on the facts, which will be, really, will depend on in each particular case, I believe you made the right decision. You did not abuse your discretion. You went through the process, and I'm very convinced of that today. And for that reason, I will not be holding the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I don't have anything to add, after all my colleagues have spoken. There's no way I could find that the staff hearing officer displayed an abuse of discretion. And granted, it was a very fuzzy affair, and lots of things went on that probably shouldn't have. But I was, it was the right decision, and I will also be supporting it. So are there any other, the motion, motion on the floor, which is to deny the appeal and uphold the staff hearing officer? Any other comments from the planning commission? Oh, Commissioner Jordan?
No, no, just waiting to vote.
Oh, okay, you're just turning your mic on, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. The appeal has been denied. Thank you all. All right, we have a few...
Madam Chair, this decision is appealable to the city council.
Oh, okay, yes. This decision is appealable, within ten days, to the Santa Barbara City Council. All right, that leaves us with the administrative agenda. Committee and liaison reports, staff hearing officer liaison report. I guess we've kind of just had it.
I'll go. You want me to go first? I'll go first.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, Jay's coming back. He just gave me the nod. So Water Commission met last month, nothing out of the ordinary there, other than to keep hammering the news that despite the small amounts of rainfall, or even less than small amounts of rainfall, or more than small amounts, you see, we are still in a significant drought. We are still looking towards summer, to see how bad that's going to be. We're still pulling as much water out of, along with the other agencies that pull into Kachuma, we're still pulling as much water out of the north as we can. We're getting really, really close, at least before last week's rain, we're getting really, really close to having to make a decision on a, another relocation of the pumping barge, and that, I think, is a summer decision by the latest. And part of that decision, given the new normal, is going to be whether or not we put in permanent piping, rather than the temporary piping, so the barge doesn't have to reset the piping all the time. Other significant news, but the only other item, is that the D cell plant is up and running, and certified at full capacity. It's actually running at full capacity right now, and supplying the lower half of the city. And we're hoping to see a tour for public sometime in the fall. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And the issue about the barge is because the water level is too low at the intake tower, and has to be pumped up.
And they're anticipating that it will continue to drop by summer, of course, more dramatically, and that where it will go will be at the same place it was last summer, or the summer before, before they moved it back to higher water. And so, as it, as the water goes up and down, the piping floats on top of the water right now. So one of the ways around that, of course, would be to spend a bunch more money, and put permanent piping in at the bottom of the lake, so it's not affected by the, by the lake height.
The lake level.
And then the barge would... And then the barge would just go and hook up wherever it wanted to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Christian Higgins.
Yeah, staff hearing officer report from the 14th of March, there was a coastal ADU permit that was approved that was not a hearing, but a hearing. It was one of those that are confusing, but it was approved nonetheless by the hearing officer. There was a mod associated with that project for a setback encroachment, and so that's the reason for the hearing, not hearing. And then there were two time extensions approved for the project, 800 block of Milpiss, and I forget the nature of the development, but I think it's the vacant corner there on the northeast corner. The applicant representative was Eric Gorn, and those two time extensions were approved.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Thompson.
Well, the Single Family Design Board had an interesting project to review this week. Somebody wants to put in a very large, more than 10,000 gallon rainfall retention tank, and they had to review that. Apparently, staff's position is that any structure on a single-family lot is reviewable under architectural review at the Single Family Design Board. It's actually continued to come back for a subsequent review, see how they might camouflage it or whatever. But I thought it was kind of interesting that it has nothing to do with residents at all, it's a water tank storage on a residential lot for rainfall. Interesting.
Somebody had to review it, right?
Yeah, I guess so. I thought the Building and Safety would review it, but apparently they don't start reviewing it until after the Single Family Design Board gets finished with it.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. On behalf of Commissioner Thompson and myself regarding the Highway 101 HOV project, news just came out that the California Transportation Commission on March 21 decided to allocate an additional new $226 million in state transportation funds to the HOV widening project. So that's going to expedite or accelerate the timeline. I know many have pressed for that, especially out of the January 9 debris flow and closing of 101. There's been a lot of discussion with all the elected officials to see how to accelerate that. The Transportation Commission is also expected to vote on an additional $183 million. That was a request from SB CAG, and that'll happen in May, to see if that could be added to the $226 million to further accelerate the timeline. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Campanella.
Oh, thank you. Architectural Board of Review on March 12 had their concept review for the four-acre restoration of the Rural Borough Creek Corridor located on the city property. The comments were very favorable. This next comes to us for a CDP.
I'll report on a couple of the Historic Landmarks Commission meetings. At the March 21 meeting, there was a concept review of converting an office upstairs over Opel to a residence. And my, there are a lot of issues connected with that, and it will eventually come to the planning commission, including that there was considerable discussion about the disadvantages of living over a restaurant, as you can imagine. Then, the other one, it's 1220 State Street, and you've probably all seen the news stories about the mural on the passageway next to the Granada. But there are going to be some changes back there, and they're proposing to build a couple of garages for the two residences that are on the top floors of the Granada building. And this project will be coming to the planning commission because of a proposed lot line adjustment. Then at the meeting, just simply for your information, at the April 4 meeting, the Parker Boutique Hotel was before the Historic Landmarks Commission again, and it too will be coming to the planning commission for further review.
Question on the Granada project, was any lighting in that alleyway discussed? That's what it needs more than murals, it definitely needs lighting from a safety standpoint.
I don't have any notes on that, but I agree with you, and I do think there was discussion of that, at least reported in the news stories about it. But you're right, it is needed. Anything else? All right, if not, that concludes the planning commission's agenda for today, and the meeting is adjourned. And we will not be back until May 3.